Recording in progress.
Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, July 1st meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners and call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a slight change to our agenda. Mr. Hazen, do you want to?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add opening of quotes for Hamilton Trail with possible awarding those contracts today.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to the second, Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
With that...
Good morning. Adam Via, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the 7th and 11th floor of the county city building. We received bids for the small structure replacement on Hamilton Trail where the Sandmere Ditch just south of State Line Road. Our first bid is from Milestone Contractors out of South Bend, Indiana.
Before we... Oh, before you do that, is there anybody else in the room who wishes to submit a bid?
Yes, sorry.
Just in case. Seeing no one, please.
Okay, thank you. Milestone Contractors with a bid total of $213,848.60.
Let me just add why we're adding this.
Yeah.
Sky Metters is taking a well-deserved time off, and we did not receive the paperwork regarding this. And it is... It's a heavily traveled road. We've got to get that ditch, that culvert replaced.
Yes, especially with all the work going on in the area, yes.
That's why we're pushing this a little fast.
Oh, yeah. It's definitely needed from our highway inspection and our consultant inspection as well.
It is an emergency. What was our engineer's estimate on this?
I do not have that with me.
So, are you going to review with the project engineer to see if it's compliant?
Yes, we will review with... We have a representative, Christopher Burke, here today. We'll step out, review, and later in the meeting, we will recommend for award.
Thank you.
So, at this point, we need a motion to accept the bid and turn it over to
Correct.
Highway Department to evaluate and potentially bring us back a report yet this meeting. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second. We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the Commissioners' approval of the accounts payable docket. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, approval of the Berkeley Stop Loss Insurance Renewal Proposal.
Good morning. Appreciate the attention of the Board of Commissioners on this matter. My name is Ryan Carlson. I'm a county executive assigned to the St. Joe County Benefits Program with the Horton Group. I have my Horton Group colleagues, Tom Cassidy III, our Benefits Practice Leader, and Klaus Knuth, our Benefits Consultant, with me. Hopefully, this motion is fairly straightforward. We've got a renewal proposal that has been amended for the St. Joe County Health Insurance Stop Loss Policy, which is the reinsurance under the health insurance plan. We've asked for this amendment because ultimately, we are aiming to be entirely transparent. We were named broker on the St. Joe County Benefits and Welfare Plans starting June 1st. Our aim and goal is to be fully transparent in the compensation and the way that we are compensated, which is going to be a $15 per employee per month fee. Previously, the rates that are in force as of June 30th, as of yesterday, were 15% commission, which can be variable by your enrollment, but also variable by the annual premiums that are allocated to the plan. So, moving forward, we want to have transparency. That's the intent. The premiums in this circumstance will actually drop 19.5% instead of a 15% flat commission. The reason that is, and that's not... That is a typical circumstance when commissions are pulled out of a stop-loss contract because there's overhead and processing and administrative fees to pay out a broker, as well as some premium taxes. So, our goal is to reduce those rates by 19.5% effective June... or, excuse me, July 1st, and begin with our invoice for a transparent $15 per employee per month.
According to the information you submitted, we were at $2.4 million, and this will be $2.1 million, so it's a significant savings.
It is, yes. We anticipate it being a savings to the county.
Any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the Berkeley Stop Loss Insurance Renewal Proposal?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you this morning.
Next, ratification of the 2025-26 Property Casualty Insurance Renewal.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bree Roberts, Director of Physical Assets, with offices on the 7th floor of this building. And so, this is again, an insurance renewal. This specific renewal has to do with, as you mentioned, property and casualty, more specifically, our property package, liability, workers' compensation, crime, and cybercrime policies. And so, these policies, because we have a 7-1 renewal date, we were in a little bit of a time crunch, and so, we did actually bind these policies late last week. And so, we're asking for your ratification of that decision today so that we can make that formal. So, the policies are bound as set out with the documentation included in your packet. As far as brokerage fees, we still have yet to have that conversation. We're in the midst of that conversation with Gallagher even today yet. We'll probably still have that conversation to try to figure out if we want to stick with a commission-based fee or go to a flat fee. And so, that conversation has yet to be had, but this is the binding of the policies themselves. Because of that 7-1 renewal date, we needed to kind of get this done before today, and so, that's the justification for the ratification.
Mr. President, I just have a comment. The reason it's taken so long is we are renegotiating whether we're going to do commissions or a flat fee. It looks like we will be able to save a little bit of money. We're not going to save $300,000 like we did on the health insurance, but it looks like we're going to save a little bit of money and also get some more coverage in other areas that we need it, so.
Well, we certainly couldn't let it lapse. We had to have it signed. I appreciate your efforts and Commissioner Hazen's efforts to get that done last week.
Absolutely.
So, Bree, this is just a ratification of the applications to bind the insurance?
Correct. Just binding the insurance policies themselves.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, Mr... Okay, I'm like, wait a minute. Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, do we have a motion to ratify the 2025-26 Property Casualty Insurance Renewal?
Motion. Motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Bree.
Thank you.
Moving on to IPG, approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Counselor, since we're on IPG, is this... I see our folks are back. Should we?
Sure, if they're ready, we can certainly do that now.
After review with our consultant, we recommend the small structure replacement be awarded to milestone contractors for the sum of $213,848.60.
I would take it you're in alignment with what we estimated or the engineering estimation?
Yeah, it doesn't seem out of order for what we were expecting.
Having heard that, do we have any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the awarding of the small structure replacement on Hamilton Trail to milestone construction?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for the work. Moving on to our prosecutor, approval of the application request to the ICGI for the 2025 STOP Grant. A STOP Grant.
Good morning. Bob Risenhoover, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. We're here this morning to ask for your permission to apply for a new STOP Grant, STOP Grant 2025, in the amount of $225,923. It's for the Special Victims Unit. It's the group across the river that handles the sexual assault, domestic violence, and stalking cases. This will pay the partial salaries of eight people, three attorneys, two paralegals, and four victim advocates. As a side note, all the victim advocates in the prosecutor's offices are certified by the state, so they're very key positions for all these different departments. But it does require a 25% match, all STOP Grants do, and it's for $75,308, and that amount is included in the prosecutor's budget. If people don't know what STOP Grant means, STOP, I mean, there's a lot of them around. It stands for Services Training Officers and Prosecutors. That's on the grant itself. And like I said, there's a lot of these STOP Grants around, but people... Some people don't understand what it means, but that's what it is. But we're asking for your permission to approve this application. This is, by the way, it's a continuation grant. This will be the 16th year that I've done them, and the county's had them for 22 years now, so it's a long, long grant.
I remember we've done it the past two years that I've been here, so.
Yes, it's a good program.
It is a good program, in my opinion.
Just keeping our fingers crossed that it stays active. You never know.
Any questions for Mr. Risenhoover regarding the application for the STOP Grant? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And Bob, thanks for bringing that down because, as you and I discussed...
Yes.
That electronic signature is not...
No, I kept a lot of trouble with it.
Thank you. Moving on to the JJC, we have two items. First is approval of the service order renewal with Transfer Inc. for job readiness virtual simulations.
Good morning. My name is Jordan Morris. I'm the Assistant Chief Probation Officer with the JJC located at 1,000 South Michigan Street, South Bend, Indiana. We do have two items on the agenda, the first being the approval to renew our service order for Transfer Inc. as outlined in the submitted letter. This equipment and services provide us to be able to allow children and youth who are at risk, whether they are on probation in the community or in our detention center, to complete interactive modules, which help with job readiness skills as well as just general life skills. I was able to actually wear one of these virtual reality simulators recently and did a oil changing on a car. I know how to change the oil on a car. I wanted to see how realistic it was and if it was accurate, and it's excellent. So, it's very... It's very good in terms of it's something they can use to just discover different career paths and then learn just general skills that are needed and beneficial in life. So, we would just ask for that to be approved.
The amount is $10,000, and it's in the prosecutor's... prosecutor, sorry.
In the JJC?
In the JJC.
Yes, yes.
Budget?
It is.
Ma'am, is this... I think this training idea is very positive. Do you... Have you guys established any, like, KPIs for... to basically see if it's really working, and is it a mandatory program for the kids or not?
That's definitely something that we'd like to do this upcoming year, is be able to figure out a way to evaluate the effectiveness. We haven't done that thus far, but that's something that we look forward to doing.
So, you will be implementing a program to do that?
We will. We'll look at some baseline measurements. I know that the kids can also take... They'll take some different tests to kind of see what careers there are suggested through the system, and I know that Transfer is also working with the workforce development to get certifications so that kids, when they complete these modules, they'll actually get certificates and be able to take those then to potential employers. So, those are all things that we're working on this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Glad that you're renewing this. If there are no other questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on, still with the JJC, approval of the application request to the ICJI for the 2025-2026 Alternatives Planning Grant.
Thank you. Yes, so second... The second item there is we would like permission to be able to apply for this grant. This would be an application requesting $19,950 in funds through the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute Juvenile Community Alternatives Planning Grant Program. This would be a new grant application, as we've not applied for this in the past. We've been able to identify a disproportionate number of youth of color entering the justice system when compared to the overall demographics of our county, and this program for which the grant would fund, if we're permitted to apply, outlines comprehensive training and coaching, looking at building resilience as well as relationship intelligence, and improving overall decision-making for juveniles that are involved in the justice system while also equipping their caregivers. This would train our probation officers that serve the children that are in the community on formal probation and support them. It is a unique model, which is why I mentioned the disproportionate minority contact in that it actually uses culturally relevant language and practices and research that resonate with youth and families from diverse backgrounds, so we believe that to be important. Dr. Laurier, the founding president of GC Scored, is also here as well today just to show her commitment in investing in this community and our population of at-risk youth.
Would she like to add to the... There you are. Is there anything you wish to add to this? Talk a little more about the program and... Please.
Yes.
Want to get your words recorded?
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Part of our programming focuses a lot on the ecology of problems. We believe that problems are systemic, systemic. So, a person comes with a problem. That person is not just the only part we need to look at. We look at familial, we look at individual, we look at community, we look at school, we look at society, and in order for us to effectively problem-solve, we have to look at the child or the youth from a systems perspective. And so, we're working with all the systems that impact or influence why the child is where he is, he or she is. And in order to solve a problem, it has to be looked at from a systemic perspective. And so, in addition to the... our intervention being culturally conscious, we look at culture not just as race or ethnicity, but we look at culture as religion, family context, education against society, all of those factors influences when we have children and youth who are at risk. And so, that's how our program is set up, and again, in order for us to help these youths, we have to look at the individuals who are supporting them, provide support for those individuals so that they can effectively help the kids.
Is this a new program?
Well, not really. I've been working on this project. I've developed this framework. I am also a professor at IUSB, and I developed this framework in 2015. I've used it across the globe. I've used it as far as close as Michigan Benton Harbor area schools. I've worked with South Bend Schools, Elkhart, lots of different places in the area, Florida, different states.
I was just going to ask you that. Do you have like a proven track record with this program?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
It sounds wonderful, you know?
Yeah.
But I was just wondering...
Yeah, we have...
The results? I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have data to support the efficacy of the program.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you're saying that you feel like this program will help change those disproportionate numbers?
Absolutely.
You say that with a lot of confidence?
I am 100% confident, yeah.
Thank you. That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you both. Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the application for the Alternatives Planning Grant?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments. Dan, I know you were on this sheet. And Dan, two Dans today. I'm sorry. Dan, go ahead, since you're already up.
Morning, Commissioners. Dan Caruso, New Carlisle, thank you for your work. I had a moment of rational thought, and I was able to record it, and I'm going to read it. I don't like reading script, but I recorded this, and I sent it to the county council, and I will read it to you, what I sent to the county council. "Good afternoon, Council. My community, New Carlisle and Olive Township, through the rezoning of much of our prime agricultural land to industrial, has contributed greatly to the economic development and growth of St. Joseph County, Indiana. The time has come for the Regional Chamber of Commerce, the Director of Economic Development, and the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth to look elsewhere for participation from communities located in St. Joseph County other than New Carlisle and Olive Township. Please oppose any future attempts to rezone agricultural land to industrial in New Carlisle and Olive Township. Thank you." And you can use this... I just came up with this sitting here. Just say no. No more industrial rezoning in New Carlisle and Olive Township. Thank you.
Now, the other Dan.
My name's Dan Carter. I live at 25285 Edison Road, near Lydic. My phone number is 574-217-6806. I have some concerns about the safetyness of our railroad crossings in the western part of St. Joe County. I want to start off with, God bless the souls of the five young kids that lost their lives in Gary, and the young kid that died in OCOA a few years back. These kids would still be alive today if these railroad crossings would have had four quadrant gate systems. The extra gates would have prevented them or discouraged them from crossing the tracks with an approaching train. To prevent any more of these tragedies, the St. Joe County Highway Department needs to initiate and request from the railroad companies the installation and additional... installation of additional gates and/or relocate existing gates to create these four quadrant systems at the crossings. I have brought this up before, and how the railroad crossings in western part of St. Joe County are unsafe. When you mix speeds of trains from 79 miles an hour to 5 miles an hour and multiple tracks, these railroad crossings at these railroad crossings, you're going to have safety issues and accidents. I believe there should be a law or an ordinance that requires a four quadrant gate system at any railroad crossing with two or more tracks, and at any railroad crossings that has high-speed trains going through the crossing, whether it's got a single track or multiple tracks. If no action is taken at these types of crossings, I feel St. Joe County could be held accountable for any future accidents. I think before any money is spent on the new relocation of the South Shore at the airport, all the railroad crossings with the South Shoreline should be upgraded to four quadrant gate system. Safety first, speed second. Drivers are learning these train patterns. The freight trains are moving slow and/or blocking railroad crossings. The drivers become frustrated and anxious and wants to try, and the drivers want to try to beat the train. And they make a bad decision and go around the gates. With a four-gate system, these bad decisions go away and prevents any accidents from happening. I have witnessed one vehicle attempting to go around the gates at the Country Club Road Crossing, and just Saturday morning, I witnessed two vehicles going around the gates at Quince Road, and then one, the one was a FedEx delivery truck. It's going to happen more and more with the industries growing in the western part of St. Joe County. The more drivers you're going to have crossing this... The more drivers you're going to have crossing these tracks. I'm surprised the loss of these five kids didn't make national news. My heart goes out to all the parents and the...
We only allow three minutes for public comment.
Yeah, okay.
Your time's up, so we appreciate it.
Well, you know where I'm going with this, so set the new standard by putting in some four quadrant gate systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody online wish to... Oh, first of all, anybody in the audience wish to offer a comment? Seeing no one, let's go to those who are online. Seeing no one, before we recess, appreciate Dan Carter's comments. He has been... He has been diligent during my time in office as well as for years before advocating for this. I will say that we are, now I'm going to put on my Nikte hat. The Northern Indiana Community Transportation District on which I serve is in the process of a new 25-20-year plan, and that is one of the elements that we are going to include in that as far as this trustee is concerned. And we will certainly take your comments regarding what's happened to heart. Tragic loss of life in Gary between Miller and Gary with the five people who were killed, and certainly the young man out on the western, eastern part of the county who several years ago lost his life. And you're right, preventable, although white people think they can beat trains is beyond me. So, there will be more, more action forthcoming. Appreciate the comments. Anything else? If not, do we have a motion to recess?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Baxmire?
Aye.
Recording stopped.